I'd like to bring to order the July 8th meeting of the Town Council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy? Counselor Ruda?
Present.
Counselor Lambert?
Present.
Counselor DiMaderis?
Present.
Counselor Shabbat?
Present.
Counselor Gerlach?
Present.
Counselor Rodrick and Counselor Pelletier are absent.
It isn't.
Yeah, but this one's not.
Why don't you go from here?
Approval of consent agenda. Consent agenda, approval of the minutes. Regular council meeting, June 24th, 2013. Counselor Ruda abstained, absent. Approval of executive session minutes, June 24th, 2013. Counselor Ruda abstained, absent. Approval of workshop minutes, June 17th, 2013. Counselor Ruda and Pelletier abstained, absent. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Prevention Coalition, Library Board of Trustees, two of them. Historic Prevention Advisory Board, Open Space Commission. Correspondents receive and file Charleston Town Council Resolution opposing H. 6167, Limiting Local Control of Subdivision Review. City of Boston Appreciation of Tibbetts' Expression of Solidarity. Approval of taxes as its abatement. Navigans Bay, Willman, Providence, Rhode Island. Request permission to hold annual bike ride on Sunday, September 8th, 2013. Police Chief Recommendation. Would anyone like to pull anything off for discussion?
Mr. Vice President, I'd like to pull C.A. 2C, Historic Preservation Advisory Board, off.
Madam President, I'd also like to pull A. 1A for correction.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda pulling off C. 1A and C.A. 2C.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor. Jim, 1A.
On page five, under bids and requests for proposals, it indicates that T.A. Goncalo explained that the FDR, the Budget Committee, recommended $20,000 for roof reshingling pertaining to the North Tibbetts Fire Station. It should actually be $21,000.
Entertain a motion to approve C. 1A as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda item C. 1A as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? 2C.
This is just a quick question. I don't know if Jim or Nancy, you'll have any information here, but on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board minutes, there's a fair amount of information here about the potential Historic District Zoning Commission. In the minutes, it alludes to approaching the Town Council sometime in June. Clearly, that didn't happen, but I didn't know if we had a sense of when that might be coming before the council for a...
No, I can contact them and find out, but at this point, they haven't approached us.
Okay.
I'll have that for the next meeting.
Sure.
Anyone else? Entertain a motion to approve 2C, Historic Prevention Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Open public forum for announcements, comments, questions. Joanne Monas?
Not here yet.
Barbara Pelletier?
Madam President, I want to pass this round to Barbara Pelletier. I neglected to put on as an agenda item. She... Hi. It's essentially what I tried to cover the last time. Availability of information, not just tourism as information, as spoken by Nancy Mello. And I think it might be good if we sometimes have a place to put general information. Not everybody uses the Internet, and it's just a nice place. And who knows? Maybe people coming into town are actually interested in what this town is all about. And if we had some sort of place that we can all go to in front of Town Hall, it might be a good thing. We could make an accessible stand with dispensing slots where other businesses can put their things in, et cetera, et cetera. And to tie in with that so that people actually know that we do have information available, if you notice, a lot of towns, when you go in, you'll see a sign, tourist information or something like that, Newport, Bristol, Warren. And we do already have several signs, like Historic District on the highway and Tibbetts Four Corners. And if the post is there, all we need to do is put another sign saying, information available, Town Hall, or something like that. Whatever the wording is, that works, but it's just a thought. And I don't think it would cost very much. I think we should encourage businesses to take advantage of that and maybe grow. And I looked up available things that might be suitable, and I think it can be done under $500, which might, I don't know how wealthy we are at this point, but if we're stressed out, I'd be willing to help find a sponsor to underwrite this for naming rights or whatever. So, you know, when you discuss it, you might want to let me know after, and I'll be, I'll go ahead with that.
Sure.
And I don't know what else.
Is this an official agenda item, or is this still part of the...
You're not going to be able to have it as an agenda item because she's just, but she was supposed to be on the agenda. I wasn't at the last meeting. I didn't catch on that it was going to be in the agenda.
We can put it on the agenda next time.
I will put it on the next agenda item, but she still wanted you to be aware that she's, you know, pursuing, trying to get us some tourism in town and some business.
And the other thought I had when, you know, getting information together is that perhaps at some future date, and I don't know if you want this as an agenda item, is there a possibility of, like, once a month, having a meeting that would include one representative from each committee in town, be it the Open Space Committee, et cetera, all of these committees? Because I think there's things, there are things happening between economic development and this and that and the other, that really, everybody's trying to invent the wheel in their own way. And if they shared information, I think it might be a good thing to move things forward. It's like an open round table. Everybody send one representative, discuss a matter that might be on the forefront of two or three committees that might, where information sharing might be advantageous. And I think it's sort of like a mutual help, shared governance, ombudsman for, and it's transparency at its best. And I think that we can all solve problems better together when we put all our heads together.
Thanks, Barbara.
But maybe we could consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Odell, RITBA lawsuit.
Jim Odell, Warren Avenue. I just have a question for our solicitor concerning the rip-up lawsuit. I had a conversation with the president of the Portsmouth Council today, and he was going to speak directly to Mr. Gavin. And Mr. Gavin was supposed to speak to Mr. Tights about updating us on the travel and what's happening and so on.
Are you allowed to comment?
I think, well, it's not really something, it's not on the agenda on this big out thing. I think what I would suggest is if you want to make a motion to add it to the agenda for discussion purposes only, either if you want now or you want to add it to the litigation matters. I didn't put anything on the agenda sooner because the way things were going with the legislature last week, I didn't know what was going to happen. So I'm happy to, I am happy to update you, but it just, it needs to be added to the agenda, either following the speak-out section or under the case section.
Can I save us all some time? Are we moving to the circuit court? That's my question. That's it.
Well, I think we still have to put it back on, we have to put it on the agenda for discussion.
Okay, well, this says questions. Open public forum, announcements, comments, and questions.
That's correct. But, and the council can, the council can hear the public's comments, and they can discuss it, but if they're going to discuss it, they have to add it to the agenda. So it's, I know it seems like, it seems like a technicality, but it's an important technicality, the open meetings law, that it be added to the agenda if they're going to discuss it.
All right. At this point, would anybody like to make a motion to add it to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add an update on the Secconnet River Bridge toll litigation as item K. 2 in the agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Lee Hoyer?
Madam Chairman and council members, I come tonight, in contrast to the past, I'm not asking for anything. I just wanted to share with you some good news. From the beginning, we have talked about the OLS, the Office of Library and Information Services Construction Grant that is key to the new library. This past week, the trustees received approval from OLS, and on Monday, Barbara Donnelly signed for the trustees a contract with the Office of Library and Information Services to provide a grant of just over $4 million after completion of the library pending audit of expenses. So that was the last big hurdle that we had to get over, and it is passed now. What we are waiting for are two approvals from state agencies, from the D E M for the wetlands that are a small part of the plot, and from DOT for utility movement under the state highway. Once those are received and the small issues that have been resolved with the planning board, we'll be able to go out for bids and start construction. So, good news, and thank you for your support over the years.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Public hearings and public presentation, advertise public hearing, St. Teresa's Church public hearing for sound variance, and special event outdoor entertainment license for event to take place on Friday, August 2nd, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, August 3rd, from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And Sunday, August 4th, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Is anyone here from St. Teresa's?
Ray LaPage, Chair, 23 Mathuen Street. I have here a listing of the entertainment if you'd like to...
May I?
It's same as last year.
Yes.
At this point, I'd like to open to public comment. Anyone in the audience would like to speak can do it now, please. Open it up to public comment. Okay. I'm going to close the public comment section. Any of the councils have any questions or comments? No?
No.
Like to entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the sound variance and special event outdoor entertainment license for the event and dates were fully described in the agenda.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Advertise public hearing, Tibbetts Land Trust, public hearing for sound variance and special event outdoor entertainment license for event Country Day at Pod and Gray to take place on Saturday, September 21st, with rain date of Sunday, September 22nd, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Hello?
Good evening. My name is Wayne Barone. I'm from Tibbetts Land Trust. I live at 98 Fieldstone Lane in Tibbetts. Just one correction on that. The time is from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., not 8:00 a.m. That's both the date in, September 21st and rain date if we need it.
And this is also the same event as last year?
Yes.
At this point, I'd like to open it to public comment. Anyone would like to comment from the audience, please come up. Anyone who'd like to comment, please come up. I'll close public comment.
Thank you.
Any comments from the council?
No.
To entertain, I'd like to entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the sound variance and special event outdoor entertainment license for the event Country Day at Pod and Gray for the dates noted as corrected in the open session.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Town Council sitting as a board of licensing, not advised, advertised license, East Lake Variety 750 East Road, request approval of annual fireworks license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Chief?
Madam President, we would also recommend approval of that. We've had no problem. Again, this is a license that had been there in the past and just had fallen through the correction.
Thank you. Like to entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the request for the annual fireworks license of East Lake Variety 750 East Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Appointments and resignations, new request for appointment for board with vacancies. Art commission, one vacancy, two-year term expiring 4/15/2015. Ruth A. Maderis, 48 Springer Avenue. Nancy Ruth isn't here.
Ruth has not been able to make it. She has attended several of the Arts Council's receptions, is familiar with the other team members on the Arts Council. She has met with the team and met with the council, and they fully support her appointment to the, to the Arts Council. Let me just read her appointment request for Ruth A. Maderis. She's retired. She worked for a company that published newsletters for seniors. She did paste-up and designed calendars. She volunteered for the Essex branch of the Tibbetts Library at their summer book fair. And this year, she volunteered to help collect, organize, and categorize the donated books for the sale. For several years, she was active in drawing and painting. She has had a lifelong interest in art for many years. She's available for the monthly meetings and also for the arts receptions, as I've seen her at the arts receptions. She would like to be on the Arts Committee to help to promote art in the Tibbetts area. I would like to make a motion to appoint Ruth A. Maderis to a two-year term expiring 4/15/2015 to the Arts Commission.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. New business via Chief Lloyd. Permission to advertise to establish a list, a list for position of a firefighter EMT and hire replacement for an opening to the department. Chief Lloyd?
Yep. Saga continues. We've had a firefighter who took employment with the city of Pawtucket. We have currently extended, expanded, or let's see, expended our recruit process list that we have. We need to go back out and re-advertise again.
Chief, where do we typically advertise? I just have no idea.
Secconnet Times, Providence Journal.
It's a local paper.
I also send it out to every fire department within the state of Rhode Island. Everyone that I have contacts with, I try to send it out and try to use the social media as much too to get out as many as we can.
Sure.
The process is we have to hire, we get their, I mean, we advertise, we get their applications in, then there's a testing process, and eventually, they go through to the personnel board, and then finally, back to the administrator. It's a long process. But again, it leaves the department short. We're short-staffed now, so overtime is used to fill.
Yeah. Best-case scenario, when would, you know, assuming a recruit could be found, when could...
October.
October.
Depending on when the process could start. The process will definitely, if we get going now, will run all the way through. I'm saying, being really optimistic, October. I see more like December right now.
Okay.
Like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to give Chief Lloyd permission to advertise to establish a list for position of firefighter EMT and hire a replacement for an opening in the department. Second?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Town Administrator requests council acceptance of the Quaker Avenue extension as town-owned and maintained road.
During the construction of the bridge, the new Secconnet River Bridge, there was a section of Quaker Avenue that was not connected. It did not cross Central Avenue. Reason being, that was the entrance and exit to the old Secconnet River Bridge. During that construction, I saw that the people at the lower end of Quaker Avenue would have to go through a construction zone under the new bridge to get to Evans Avenue to exit that area. I requested from the state that they pave that little extension connecting both sides of Quaker Avenue, and they graciously accepted. At this point, it's been completed to state standards, which is better than town standards. And I have asked if they would, don't, you know, turn it over to us. But before I can complete that transaction, I need council approval to accept that small portion of Quaker Avenue that's going to connect. And I've received many, many comments over the construction period that people were happy with that, and they want to keep it. It's a direct, you know, up-to-main road.
Yeah.
So they don't have to go in and out over to Evans Avenue.
And Jim, people have been using it now that it's complete.
Oh, yeah.
This is just a technicality.
They've been using it, they've been using it right, right from the beginning of construction.
Will it be called Quaker Avenue Extension? Or would it just be part of Quaker Ave?
No, it'll just be Quaker Avenue because it's just connecting, you know, the lower Quaker Avenue to the upper Quaker Avenue. So it'll just be called Quaker Avenue.
Then I'll make a motion to accept the Quaker Avenue extension that connected the lower and the upper portion of Quaker Avenue during the Secconnet River Bridge construction and as identified in item G. 2 of the agenda.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Town Administrator again, temporary storm debris storage site at closed section of landfill.
After Sandy, I guess it was, we were approached by a team from Rhode Island DOT, D E M, and Emergency Management for the purpose of using the closed section of our landfill in the event that there is another emergency, and they're clearing streets and so on and so forth. They needed a place to stage the debris so that they could process it. So they have asked us to do so, and you have, you know, the description of what it is, and we are working on a tentative agreement. Now, none of the stuff would be hazardous, and none of the stuff would remain. And at this point, I would introduce our DPW director to explain any more detail.
Yeah, the, I even kind of offered the thought of letting them take the whole thing permanently so we don't have to cap it, but they weren't buying that part. So in any case, they don't have an area like ours that are available anywhere from Bristol to Portsmouth to Little Compton and up in this area, just a temporary storage. They're going to test all, D E M's going to test all the ground beforehand. We'll have a baseline of any contamination or anything that may be existing, which we don't expect. It's a dump, and we've been covering with, you know, tested cover. And it'd be an area where they would bring a huge storm. Houses, separate the white goods from the plumbing, from the wood, from the asphalt, trees. This is for an event that we maybe haven't had in a long, long, long time. And then they would be responsible to haul everything back off the site and process it there, separate it there, haul it off. There would be inspecting it coming in, and there's a big process of documentation when we have an event that's, you know, possibly FEMA are going to be involved in, in the state. So all three agencies came to us. The only thing I thought, they wanted a staging area in the parking area, the main parking area of the playground, out from Main Road back. And I told them I wanted it paved, and I wanted them to pave a bad section of the road going up to landfill, curvy and winding. We ended paving that because it fell apart. And after a year, I think they're coming to terms finally to pave the pole-bottom parking lot of the, of the town farm playground area for us. I think for $31,000 or something like that. So we've been working on a memorandum of agreement for a year now, well, since the big storms, and have hammered out some language. It's not gone any farther than like Jim I and one guy from Ride-A-Tot, and we're just trying to get it where we're happy. And the big sticking point was $31,000 with the paving, which I think they came around to. So I guess we're working with them. But the Ride-A-Tot's the lead agency. We have one lead fellow we're dealing with from engineering, and it's about all I know about it, so.
If I might add, we're bringing this to the council now for information only. We're still working on the agreement. Once the agreement is in a position to bring before the council, we will do so.
I have a couple of questions, just if we can talk through them now, just so I better understand this. So, once they pave the recreation, because I'm concerned about, it's, if they pave it, it would only be commandeered, that's my word, that's not anywhere in here, for vehicle staging if and when we had an event. It's not like it's closed off for recreational use year-round.
Right.
No. Okay. Because that would be a major impact on the recreational activities.
Well, if we have a huge event, then it's going to have much recreation.
No, 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 no. I understand that, but I didn't know if it was going to be closed off as DOT property or... Oh, no. Okay.
And we can, we can close down this agreement from what we have, anytime. Done deal, gone. We're going to put condos on the landfill. You're not going to be allowed to go there. All right? I mean, so we're not locked in for any timeframe, you know? But it's a good thing for us to have because we need someplace, they're going to take all of our debris too.
Yeah.
Because we're not going to have a landfill forever, so we're going to be stuck for a place to put cleanup Tibbetts in too, so. I'm sorry, Chief.
Just, Mr. Belucci is correct on this. This is, Rhode Island EMA came to us, and they talked about this, and then Rhode Island DOT. This is part of a debris management plan that we have to have from EMA. It's very advantageous for us to get the state to do it. How this would take effect is if there's a lodge event, like a Sandy, something else where there's a lot of green debris down, buildings and such are destroyed. There isn't going to be recreation. There won't be other things going on at that time. As the trucks come in, every truck that comes in has to be surveyed. It has to be inspected. What debris is in it has to be separated out. The staging area that Mr. Belucci is talking about... The staging area that Mr. Belucci is talking about is a paved area at the beginning of it as the trucks line up and come in. Then they would go up from what you have in the chart in front of you to take to a larger area where everything would be separated out. All the green debris, trees, stumps and such like that would all be ground up. The white goods would be taken apart, they'd be scrapped, the hazardous materials would be taken out of them. This is something we would have to do if we had a large event, if you look to see what happened down in Westerly and Charleston, those other areas. So it's kind of fortunate that we've gotten the state to come in and to do this for us. So it is a good thing for us. We do have our concerns about it. We're not giving away the land to them and such, and if we can get something out of it. The biggest part that I see that we get out of it from the EMA perspective is we don't have to establish a site to take it. They would have to take ours also to benefit the town in that degree. So this is a temporary site where they—because anything that came off the island anywhere would have to go to Johnston anyways. So this is a staging area for it where it can be separated, done, processed, and taken to Johnston at their problem, not our problem. So I think it's a good thing.
Is it staffed by D E M?
At this point, from what we've determined, they would be the ones staffing it. If not, we would have to have somebody staff.
The state would—could be Rideart, could be—the state, EMA, one of the three, I imagine.
They would operate it, they would run it.
Not us.
Not us, that's all.
Yeah, not us. But if we did not have this in place and something were to occur, we would have to do something like this.
Sure. My only other question is, do we have a sense of how big this tower is?
It's only about—it's just to be able to see the top of a truck.
Oh, okay.
That's all it is. A wooden platform that they can look in, inspect the load to see whether it's seventy percent, eighty percent full, what capacity the truck is, and that is logged. It's a bill of laden for every vehicle that comes in. The process with debris is from cradle to grave, and you have to document it all the way along. So somebody has to inspect it when it shows up. Sorry, I didn't mean to say—no, I know.
So there's no cost to the town at this point?
There is no cost, no.
And I don't see that there would be.
And we're trying to get thirty-one thousand dollars worth of paving out of it.
Correct.
And it doesn't matter that it's uncapped right now, but in a few years' time, it will be a capped section.
That's negotiable is how long they want to—D E M wants to leave it open and accessed, I would say, to being a resource center for them. I don't know. It's, you know, we'll go along for as long as I think they want to, I would think, before we have to spend, what, five million dollars to cap that half? You know? And we're collecting money through pay-as-you-throw, so it'll help that bottom line way down as long as they want to use it. And D E M, they're the ones who's licensing this, and they came to us, and they're asking for this, so I would think they'd follow through somehow with that, I would think.
So we could get a delay on that section?
Could be, we'll see. For a while.
That might be a good idea.
A good thing, I know.
Keep that in mind, Jim.
Any other questions? Comments?
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Tights, items and announcements, District Court, CA number—where did I miss? Oh, town—I'm sorry. Town Administrator, items and announcements?
Just can't wait to get them.
Oh, I'm trying to break a record. Am I doing it? Hurry up, Jim.
Okay, just a quick announcement. I give you the taxes that have been collected. As of June 30th, 2013, we have collected ninety-seven point two-five percent of our levy. Last year, at the same time, six-thirty, 2012, we collected ninety-seven point two-one percent of our levy. So we're a little bit ahead, point oh-four percent. Prepaid, you know, the people that prepay this year's taxes and the first quarter. Prepaid as of six-thirty thirteen is four point three million dollars. As of six-thirty, 2012, it was three point eight million dollars. So we're ahead by half a million dollars. The next item, recycling. June 2012, we recycled one hundred and seventy-four tons. June 2013, we recycled one hundred and seventy-three tons. So we were right in the—right in, very close. Just for information purposes, the DPW will be painting the lines on Warren Avenue.
I can hear my roadster.
And there'll be stop bars, there will also be painting stop bars where needed around town at intersections. And we have, in fact, received the update. This is regarding the reshingling of the North Tivern Fire Station. We have, in fact, received the updated certificate of insurance for the roof repair, naming the town of Tivern as a co-insure. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council announcements, comments, and questions? Anything?
Do you have some? I just had a quick update. I know last time we were talking about Stafford Pond and communicating the results of the new town ordinance out to folks. I've had two email correspondences with Director Coy at D E M. The associate director, who would be in charge of that, is just getting back from vacation this week, so I anticipate that we'll finally get some movement on them outreach to tournament permit holders regarding our new ordinance, but I'll be following up with that person this week.
Someone did email me, in fact, we just emailed out the ordinance and the application. I forgot who it was, but it was from D E M, and they asked us to send the information, so we also did send it.
Oh, that's great.
I just want to poll the council on perhaps scheduling a meeting, special meeting next week to review the personal evaluation for Mr. Goncillo. If we do it during a regular meeting, it ends up being a long night and I have a hard time going to work the next day. So I would like to poll the council and see if there's any—if there's any possibility for a meeting, special meeting next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
When is that coming back? Does any—Nancy, when?
I believe it's coming back Saturday.
You believe he's coming back Saturday?
Andy's scheduled to go on the fifteenth.
What if you—we've got the workshop on the twenty-ninth. Why don't you start at the workshop and did it earlier?
The agenda for the workshop is a long agenda.
Well, I mean, hopefully you'll deal with that when you get to that. Keep it quite as long an agenda.
The planning board has Tuesdays, so that's not an available night. On Monday, it's Tuesday. Wednesday, it's the municipal preservation board, but it's a small meeting.
Do you need Andy?
I'm available on Wednesday.
We don't know when Ed's available, but usually on Wednesdays, right?
I don't know. I'll have to email him.
Yeah.
He gets his email on his phone, and he does.
I can check my account.
I have a forum, I'll post the meeting if I don't have—please get back to me.
I'm on vacation next week, but I am around. I am around, so I just have to know when.
Is there a party on Wednesday or Thursday?
So it would be Wednesday?
Wednesday. Are there any that I won't have to contact? Denise, you're sure you'll be around if we do?
I'll check and get back to you, Nancy. I'll try to make myself around.
Mr. Lambert?
Any day is fine with me. I just—I got back from a two-week vacation. I'm retired. What else do I need? Just tell me where to show up.
I'm all set for Wednesday.
I need to check.
That's fine. Somebody that's going to check if you get back to me and if we find we have a forum.
Thursday's better for me, but—
All seven members.
I think we should have all seven.
All seven?
If all—
That's my opinion. If someone that can't, then we'll have to—
Thursday would be better for me, but I can possibly make Wednesday work.
Do we need Andy there? I know. Yeah, I guess we do, huh? Okay. I know, I was going to give you the night off. All right. All right, Nancy, we'll poll everybody.
Thank you. Jay, I know you're available.
Okay.
Anything else from the council? Okay, now I can go to Kate. Attorney Tights, items and announcements, District Court, CA number thirteen, three, four, four, M, L A L A L Construction Company Incorporated versus Town of Tivern defendants. Answer in the letter regarding discovery dispute.
Provided in your packet is—this is the federal court suit by L A L Construction against the town and also against three of the town officials individually. The inter-local trust has agreed to defend us under a reservation of rights. We've met Assistant Solicitor De Senzo and myself, and Mike De Sisto, who is the attorney on behalf of the trust, met and worked jointly on the brief. He prepared it, circulated among us. So, not brief, I'm sorry, answer. So you've seen the answer, which was filed. Also, just so you'll know, he is going to be moving forward to file a motion to dismiss on grounds of immunity qualified and absolute immunity, and try to do that first. He'll be filing that soon, within the next week or so. The other item, the second item, is actually regarding the state lawsuit. There's a lot of what we consider to be overbroad and onerous requests for production of information. And we provided—I mean, going back months, we provided access copies of the entire, all the planning board files. We've since gone further as far as DPW files and the administrator and so forth, and basically now what he's looking for, he's looking for all the—anything and anybody, including all the town council members, any email you may ever have gotten that mentioned L A L or site-ready. We don't think that's appropriate. We've objected to it. We're required to try to work together, and I've enclosed a letter from you for your information, basically, where we're pointing out that we're—we provided all we're able to provide, and at this point, we're objecting to providing anything further.
Contact NSA.
Yes, they have it.
Any other questions?
And then the next item, number two, that was added to the agenda regarding the bridge toll litigation, as I said, I didn't put it on the agenda because I didn't—have people congratulating me two weeks ago about the bridge tolls, and I said, until the governor signs the budget and the legislature adjourns, I'm not—
Yep.
—doing anything. And so we found that they did a double-cross at the last minute with the ten-cent toll. Who knows where that's going? What I can tell you about is obviously what we've done, yes, the cases on appeal to the United States Court of Appeals for the First Circuit in Boston. The appeal was filed actually back in June. We did try to—and I say we, this is Kevin Gavin, the Portsmouth Solicitor, Terrence Tierney, who's been assisting him, myself, and Gina De Senzo. We've all been working together. Terry's really been doing the lion's share of the briefing work, filing it. Unfortunately, you first have to file in the district court and request them the stay from them before you can ask for a stay for the federal court. So we're asking for a stay from the judge who just denied us a stay, but we had to go through that. But it is on appeal to the circuit court. They didn't do anything to have a timely hearing before the first. I don't know whether we'll get a hearing on our motion to stay at the end of July when they have a court session. We may or may not. Probably not. It's probably going to be months with a briefing schedule on that, so. But we are proceeding with that. And I think—it's probably safe at this point to say publicly that we've also—with the council's previous permission, the communities did some of our own traffic counts. We're very concerned about having traffic counts pre-toll before the tolls went in, so we've done some traffic counting of our own to try to establish that, so we'll be able to compare it when and if they do go in and have some valid data. Any other questions?
Any questions, answer.
Just one question. Is there any process or any mechanism to get it heard sooner?
No.
In other words, you're talking about months of wrangling back and forth. Once the toll starts, it's never going to end. The state's going to enjoy the money so much that the only thing that's going to happen is going to go from a dime to a buck in a year.
I don't disagree with you about—
Red and anonymous.
I don't disagree with you about the desire to get it soon, which is why we did it rush forward. You know, we had the exec—well, you wouldn't have known, but we had an executive session in June to get the council approval so we could go forward with the appeal right away. And this includes Bristol, too, so the three towns all together.
Yep.
And doing that, but there's nothing—there isn't any way to rush this procedure short of what we've done. We filed, made all the filings, asking for the emergency stays, asking for an emergency hearing, asking for a hearing by a single judge of the Court of Appeal who has the authority to issue a stay, but they haven't seen fit to do it, and there's nothing that we can do at this point except go through the procedures and try to keep filing the appropriate paperwork and get heard in due course.
Good old-fashioned Boston Tea Party might help.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. How long of a duration did you run the study for, for the traffic?
We planned to run it basically three weeks. A week before, the week of July 4th, I figured was not a valid week with the holiday, and then this week coming, and so we're leaving it there. So it's a total of three weeks. And then—
Any advantage we could have gained probably would have been—
Pardon me?
Any advantage of traffic spikes probably would have been nice.
Yeah, well, you know, I think we'll have a good—I think we'll have a good database, and part of the commission with the traffic expert is a meeting. What I actually anticipate is we might try to set up a meeting with the three councils together, Bristol, Tivern, and Portsmouth together, to have the traffic expert brief you on, you know, what the results show and what they think will happen. That's part of what we paid for, so that will be coming.
Anything else? At this point, I'd like to go back to ASICS and open the public forum. Mrs. Moniz has shown—Joanne Moniz. You're welcome.
No, I just wanted to say that I wrote an email, I'm Joan Moniz, 184 Stony Hall Road, that Nancy distributed to all of you.
You haven't got it distributed.
Okay.
I have it here for you.
Okay.
Steve did it for a lot, and I joined, Mrs. Moniz, I would copy it.
Right. So I just urge you to read it before you go into the executive session, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Town clerk, items and announcements, draft agenda for July 29th workshop?
Yes, I put a copy of a kind of a draft agenda, but I usually don't like to do this, and it was not put on clerk-based, because I don't want people thinking this is an agenda. But so far, these were all the kind of subsections that everybody wanted to come in and speak on, or at least has been brought forth. So it's kind of the air—if council has some additions or deletions, or how you want to group this, or how you want to do this, you know, I can change it. It won't be posted until around July 25th anyway, but because it's looking like it's getting kind of lengthy with a lot of speakers, I felt it warranted getting it before you. I don't want to leave someone out or—
I can provide a little bit more context because I've been working with Gary Plunkett offline to try to shape this agenda to ensure that we kind of get the most bang for the buck here. I think it's safe to say that certainly—well, there are a couple of things. I think, you know, Gary's first section would be fairly quick because we've already gotten that update at the council meeting a couple of meetings back. I've reached out to Kate and Susan and Steve and Paul Northrup and Carl Destrems about their particular agenda item topics. We need to confirm their willingness to participate first and foremost, so that's not set in stone. The items from Apex Wind and People's Power and Light, we thought there was—it was important to hear from some third-party experts in this area to help us get a more rounded understanding of what is happening in this space and, you know, issues that might be important for the town to be made aware of and think through as we try to revisit this topic. So that's why they are on the agenda. The gentleman from Apex Wind and the gentleman from People's Power and Light pending final confirmation. confirmation of this agenda, have stated that they would be available. You know, I think it's certainly within our domain to put a cap on any time limits available to these gentlemen to make a presentation. Certainly don't want to be here for hours, but really thought that that third-party kind of subject matter expertise perspective would be valuable for the council to get insight on, so.
Any other comments?
You must be able to get back to me before the 25th.
Yeah, so this is a priority for me in working with each of these individuals to make sure that we can shape, first of all, you know, confirm attendance, make sure that it's the appropriate content and certainly put time limits on things, so Nancy, I can work directly with you.
And my second item is just a correction. We have corrected them on our minutes, it's just because it wasn't public, the June 25th agenda, it listed June 10th minutes as June 14th, only on the agenda, not on the minutes or anything, but it was on the agenda. Apparently I have a typing problem in the heat, I think, or whatever. So I just wanted you to know that it was changed because that was done in the open accepted. And I just want to make comment that, yes, Ms. Moniz did call me, say she had something to distribute to the council. I explained to her that I can't distribute at that time in the afternoon because the council does not allow me to do that. And you would not be able to act on that, but that I definitely would copy it and get it distributed out for information tonight, but, so that's where Ms. Moniz is coming. I just want to be clear how I did explain.
Anything else? Mr. Lambert, as Mr. Rogers would say.
I move that we go into closed executive session, pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws, Chapter 42, 46, 5A2, Ray, Town of Tiverton versus James and Melissa Pellicia.
Second.
All those in favor?
And continuing executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws, Chapter 42, Section 46, 5A6, Ray Industrial Park.
Second.
All those in favor?